I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Citizen Concerns. Hearing none, we'll move on. Need approval of agenda for today?
Move approval of the agenda dated March, uh, April 14th, 2015.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Approval of the minutes for April 7th. Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Discussion of approval of claims. Any issues?
Move the claims.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Human Resources. Approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. I will pass it around. Need a motion to approve them?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. Chairman signed the authorization to initiate hiring. Need a motion? I'll move it. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, there is not a new position created here, correct?
Yeah, the, the position for sergeant that's here for courthouse security, uh, that was a position that was approved, uh, back in February, I believe it was. And so that person essentially is, is new, but it's not, it's not a new position because it was approved in February. When an existing sergeant moved over to become sergeant here, we had to put another sergeant in his place, and then we had to have another patrol deputy. So, um, there, it's just a chain reaction, one remove, one right after the other.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Siouxland District Health.
Good afternoon, Board. Glad to be here. First off, for the-
Uh, we skipped one, Mark.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Hold on, Kevin.
Ayes.
Woodbury County Vision Statement.
Yeah. It doesn't happen often. It may not be.
This is, yeah, we just wanted to, this is a vision statement that we had, that has been displayed in the county. We wanted to, let everyone take a look at it, see if they want to see this one, this one has been around later.
Yep.
And, uh, we thought it was one in a particular sense. It does show, it does point out that it says Woodbury County will be a leader in providing customer-friendly service through innovative technology, continuous process improvement, and collaborative efforts in the tri-state area. The continuous process improvement is, uh, kind of the, uh, the child of Edward, William Edwards Deming, if I remember that right, and who was Sioux City native, kind of the founder of the Toyota. And, uh, so, we felt that this made good sense. This would be part of our evaluations and on all of our evaluation statements as well.
Someone said they thought they had another one?
Yeah, that was John Ploles. I never did receive that, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't know.
Is that by the phone, or by the mail?
I honestly don't know. Yeah, he was gonna send it over, and I don't think I ever received it from, do you remember another vision statement there, or mission statement? Jackie, are you aware of another one, or Mark?
No, I do not.
Move on the vision statement.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You've already been there once.
Please a second chance. First off, uh, as Kevin Green here from Siouxland District Health Department, and for the first agenda item is a success story related to a disease investigation, and I would like to introduce our Director of Nursing, Linda Dre, whose division and staff actually oversaw this investigation, to share this information as an education piece of what we do for public health in Woodbury County. So I'll turn it over to Linda.
Hi, everybody. How are you guys?
Ellen.
Um, I'm gonna talk about tuberculosis, TB, before I get into the actual, kind of details about the case. Would you like a little bit of background information about what TB is and what we do for TB in the county?
Yes, please.
TB is a highly contagious communicable disease. It's a bacteria, um, and it can infect almost any system in the body. We typically see it in the lungs or pulmonary TB, which is the most contagious. However, it can locate in any body organ, brain, stomach, tissues, that kind of thing. There are kind of two types of TB infection. What, one is what we call latent TB infection. It means an individual has been exposed to the TB disease, but their body has, um, built up antibodies and resisted the ability to become really infectious with the disease. So, we still recommend that an individual who is diagnosed with latent tuberculosis be treated with medications, but they're not considered to have active TB, and they're not contagious to URI. Then there's the actual contagious TB disease, and that's where an individual actually has active TB disease, or the germ in their body. We know that TB is a disease that's been around for a long, long time. It kills several million people around the world, and it's hard to believe that, you know, in this day and age, we still have TB disease, but we do. We have TB disease, um, a fair amount in the United States, in Iowa and in Woodbury County. We average one to two to three cases of active TB disease in Woodbury County every year. The state of Iowa averages about forty-five to fifty active cases of TB disease. We have many, many more individuals that have latent TB infection, or that we suspect have TB disease, and we do all the things we need to do to find out whether or not they're contagious or not. Any questions about what we do? So, in Iowa, public health, which is charged with monitoring TB infections and making sure that TB does not spread unnecessarily. And here in, um, in Woodbury County, we had the opportunity, um, to have an active TB case, and that's what I want to talk about. Uh, this was a child diagnosed in Woodbury County, um, and we were first made aware that there was a child with possible TB disease when we received a phone call from a physician office. They could not locate this child, and they called us to see what we could do. Um, we got information about the address where this child lived, and we partnered with some, um, local authorities, and we actually made a home visit. A TB nurse, who is a specialist and been specially trained in our office, and myself, went out to this home. The family did not speak English, and there were a lot of communication challenges. Uh, once we located the child and the family and, and the parents, they were very, we explained to them the serious nature of this potential illness for the child, and the family was very agreeable that, um, the child be tested for TB disease, which required being hospitalized. We accompanied this child to the hospital because of, especially kids are really at high risk to have complications due to TB disease, and we really wanted to make sure that all of the right things for this child were done. So, we went to the hospital, um, the child was admitted and was confirmed to have actual TB disease. Over the course of a, a period of some time, the child was eventually discharged, and the case was referred to us to case manage. And for over eight months, we case managed this child. We saw them every single day. We watched them swallow their medicines. We made sure that they got to their doctor's appointment. We communicated with the parent's employer to make sure they knew why the parent was missing work. We monitored for adverse side effects. We made sure that the physicians understood what the treatment and plan of care should be. I'm happy to report that this child was compliant with all of their medications, and we had a successful outcome. This child did not have any serious side effects, um, and successfully was treated. There were no active spread of TB cases because of this child, and we had a really good outcome here in Woodbury County.
Very good.
That's just one thing that we do, kind of on a daily basis. At any point in time, we probably have thirty to fifty people on latent TB medications in Woodbury County, and we case manage those individuals as well.
What would have been, and maybe this is an obvious question to everybody else, but what would have been the outcome had Siouxland District Health not intervened, or-
You know, it's really hard to say, but I'm gonna go out on a limb. This family really did understand our healthcare system, had a very limited understanding. I am afraid that had we not been involved, this child would have really had serious complications. The child already had been to the provider, their medical provider, three or four times. TB had never been diagnosed, was not even considered. The child was having a lot of symptoms, and I, I really feel that there could have been a very negative, very negative, perhaps life-threatening outcome, had we not been involved, so.
Thank you for your-
Really kudos to my public health nurse. She worked with this family, and we made sure everything happened, and, and she did a phenomenal job, so.
What's her name?
Julie Sampers.
Oh.
Along with, I mean, there's a, a whole public health team of nurses behind her, but she was the point on the case. I really recognize her and, and all the work she did.
Thank you for all your help and effort.
Thanks for the opportunity. Yeah, you bet.
Okay. I gotta do it again. We have a set time. Hold on. All right, we're opening the public hearing for the sale of property parcel 475410, also known as 1608 West Sixth Street. This is only the public hearing portion. We'll bid after this. Anyone for or against the sale of this property? Hearing none, I would take a motion.
Move the hearing, be closed.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Now, we will take bids on 1608 West Sixth Street. Please come forward, state your name, and how much you would, uh, offer.
Russell Snyder, and I think the bid is seven oh six, what you guys' fees would be on it.
Right. Seven oh six?
Right.
Anyone else?
Hearing no, and move the property to be sold to Mr. Snyder. Mr., is it Snyder?
Yes.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, public hearing. Thank you, sir. She'll take your money. Public hearing and sale of property parcel 334080, also known as 2730 Prospect Street. This is just the public hearing. Anyone for or against the sale of property? Hearing none, would take a motion?
Move the hearing, be closed, Mr. Chair.
Need a second? Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Now, anyone who would like to bid on this property, please come forward. State your name.
Ralph Orr.
Okay. And your bid is?
Seven eight, seven eighteen.
Seven hundred and eighteen dollars.
I got a question. Somebody else bids higher, can I bid again?
Yes.
Thank you.
We love it. Would you like to make an offer?
Nathan West. Um, I don't know, what are the increments we go up by?
Whatever.
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty.
Eight twenty-five.
Nine hundred.
Nine fifty.
One thousand.
Okay. Need a motion?
Is that a house competing there, or a piece of land?
Piece of land.
Need a motion to, um, sell the property?
Move the property to be sold to Mr. Orr.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This young lady behind the post will take your money. All right, next property, pub, next property out for sale. Uh, this is a public hearing on property parcel 334080, also known as 2730, oh, excuse me, got the wrong one. This is for the property parcel 511590, also known as 1005 West Sixth Street. Anyone for or against the sale of this property?
Chair, move the hearing, be closed.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Now, we would take bids on this property. At 1005 West Sixth Street, anyone? Bob, are you up for it? And your bid would be?
The minimum bid.
Minimum bid, which is?
Two twenty-eight.
Three twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Two twenty, well, is that right?
Yes.
Two twenty-eight, okay. Anyone else? Need a motion to sell to Mr. Behrens.
Move that the property-
Right.
Is it Naylor?
No, it's Bob Behrens.
He's preparing for George.
Who are we selling the property to? Who are we selling the property?
Okay, this is for, um, George Naylor?
Yeah.
Okay. Move to sell the property to George Naylor with Bob Behrens as his agent. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Now we'll go back to Kevin, I'm sorry.
Third time's a charm.
You're gonna get even with me before the week's over, I bet.
Yes. Um, I'm here before you as a request, the Child Health Specialty Clinic leases space from Siouxland District Health Department. They do their telehealth services for special needs kids with the University of Iowa. Um, with the change in some of their programs, they need additional office space within the space they currently rent. Um, what I have worked with them to do is in negotiating them to-
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Can we have, Mr. Headed, can you help us out? Any peripheral conversations? I'd like to hear what Mr. Green has to present to us, so.
Okay, here we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, what we have done within this facility has gone through and, um, accepted or submitted for two different bids that contractors have provided to us. The lowest amount is for the nine thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars. Uh, what we plan to do is to pay for this improvement that they have requested out of Health Department funds, and then we will increase their lease, which we're in the process for agreeing to, for the dollar amount over nineteen months for repayment back. So it's really a, um, zero change as far as any sort of in financial impact. What I'm seeking from you as the owners of the building is just the approval to move forward with this modification.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Hey.
Who's the doctor for, uh, child health now?
Uh, child healthy, it is Cindy Shoal, is what it is, and they link through the University of Iowa.
Okay.
Yep.
Ray Sturtevant was, I was on that board for twenty-five years. Ray Sturtevant was-
Okay. Yes, no, their, uh, medical director actually comes out of the University of Iowa now.
Wow.
Is what they do, and they've opted up, uh, they revamped up their telehealth. So they have cameras that are projecting it to the specialists at the University of Iowa. So, it's quite a program. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep the good news stories coming, 'cause I think it's the best kept secret, and that goes for a lot of departments.
If you have, have good news, which I think you have a lot of, tell us.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. I believe I did. All right. Catch up here. Good grief. All right, uh, next item, approval of resolution for notice of property sale parcel 260761.
Mr. Chairman, move the date be set for April 28th at 4:40.
Very good. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, item nine. County Auditor. Appointment of Horst Zetlau, 1304 Warrior Road, Sergeant Bluff, Iowa, as Woodbury Township Trustee, to fill the office previously held by Richard French, I think that's Ronald French, until the next regular election. The appointment was made on April 2nd, 2015. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Proposed bylaws.
In January, I was tasked with, uh, working with the county attorney, Assistant County Attorney, uh, to put, uh, bylaws together for the Board. Uh, so, we did that, and, uh, I did work with Supervisor Taylor a little bit on this. Uh, he kind of gave me a framework for what I was looking for, and, uh, what you have before you is, uh, a product of that. Tried to, uh, work with, uh, what I, uh, some of the, limited search of the code sections, uh, the bylaws are the, uh, Robert's Rules of Order, and, uh, incorporate what I felt to be, uh, past practice of, of the Board. And, so, presented in your homework, I did make a change, uh, since you got the homework, and what I put on the table is what, uh, was a result of a minor change, but I remember I'd, I was talking with Supervisor Taylor, and I said in small, uh, small Board rules, according to Robert's Rules of Order, uh, you don't need a second. And this Board has always, uh, worked with a second to a motion. So I did include that, and that was a change to what was in your homework. And that is in, uh, Section 8, Manner of Acting, under Article 6 of Meetings. Any question to come before the Board shall be in the form of a motion made by a member and shall require a second for consideration. So, do you want me to go through these, uh, step by step, or you've, did you read them enough and just have questions, or how would you like me to proceed?
I read it. I don't know if I need to go through it step by step, but on, under Meeting Section, I just a question, under Section 11, we can have electronic voting? I thought that somewhere along the line, I did not think that was permissible, but it, that, that was over there.
I'll leave that to-
It's permissible if a procedure is established in the bylaws that provide for it. So, uh, you can do it either way. You could prohibit it altogether, or you could, um, what we've written in there allows it, um, following those procedures.
I personally don't like electronic participation. The job of supervisors to be here, and there are times when they can't, but then they shouldn't be participating in votes either.
Gee, do you go there and take notes to it?
No, I totally disagree with that. We're in a new era, and it's gonna be more and more that kind of interaction happening.
Why?
They're not gonna come anymore?
No. I, can I agree with you both?
No.
Okay, well, let me try to triangulate a little bit. I, in the sense that I think it should be, we should be here. I agree with Mr. Clausen. Um, it, it should not be a habit, it should not be the norm. I think in a very, very limited circumstance where it's impossible or impractical, um, and I would give maybe a hospitalization as an example, or something that makes it prohibitive. It sounds, in talking to our Assistant County Attorney, that it should be a very limited case, that that would not become the norm. So, that's where I was saying, I, I agree with you in the sense that absolutely is the job of the supervisor to be here.
Yes.
Um, and, I think in a very limited, uh, manner, I think it's permissible by code. Should it be the, the habit? I, I think absolutely not, and I think that, uh, should it attempt to become one by certain supervisors, I think that the voters would hold that person accountable.
I do too. Today is a good example. Matthew easily could be here by phone. He's in Washington DC. They left this morning, I believe, so, it's, um, it's a situation where he's obligated to go to DC on our behalf, and, uh, could easily be here by phone. Uh, I, I do not see this as a regular event for anybody.
What the expectation then, if we're not going to be here, is to call in and rearrange? And, I mean, is that what-
That would have to be done ahead of time. So we had a phone here.
Do we even have capability of calling down here where we're at?
We could, very easily, I believe.
Maybe I'm old fashioned, but if I want to have a discussion on something, I'd kind of like to see the person I'm talking to, not by the telephone.
Well, I think it would be an option. I would, if I was going to miss, I wouldn't necessarily feel, unless it was a crucial vote, that I would even call in. If I'm not gonna be here, I would, if I'm not gonna be here, so, unless it's something critical, I probably wouldn't feel any to call in and participate.
Right.
Just knowing sometimes, you know, I would be here. But from time to time, um, maybe there would be, you know, you're here, gone, and you would like to participate in the vote.
That easy it could say from time to time.
And I, I agree. I think it should be limited. I'd rather see the person. It should be the exception to the rule, so.
But who really decides that? If we're gonna go down that, I mean, then who is the person who says, okay, you had five, you've missed five times? I mean, that's the only thing with going here, and we can all say, well, it should be limited, but who decides what limited is?
It isn't, you'd go by the rule, the interpretation of the rule.
Which is, you can explain it to me.
I think that's a determination of the Board as to whether they can electronically join us or not.
Right. Or if it's impossible or impractical, if someone's in Sioux City, I would say it would be possible that they could be here, and so, no, you may not participate by Skype simply because you like the comfort of your own surroundings from home, or something like that. The situation, I think, right now-
I, I don't wanna believe it, but really, it gets down to who decides that, does.
You can, uh-
Maybe I'm gone and I don't tell you where I'm at, and you don't know if I'm in the comfort of my recliner, or you don't know if I'm in a plane going, I don't know. I mean, it just, it's a great area, and I'm willing to work with it, 'cause I think it'll be very minimal, but-
And the, the impossible or impractical language that we put in there, um, would be what controlled, as far as policing that, um, I don't know that there's a good way of the Board doing it, but as Mr. Taylor mentioned, I mean, ultimately, the accountability is gonna be with the voters, and, uh, we could add something in here about a reason, the reasons being stated on record that the supervisor is, uh, participating electronically. Um, I mean, there's, the rule could be changed. The, the impossible or impractical lan, language is actually from the code section that deals with, if the Board were to meet strictly in a, in, in electronic fashion, which is an impossibility under the code, um, it has that same language, so, we're borrowing that language, uh, and I think that it's a good idea to do that because it's established, and there's, there's some history or case law associated with that and AG's opinions. But under the, under the code section, it uses that language, it only deals with if the Board were to meet by purposes of, um, phone conference or email, all electronic, not a mixed meeting where there's some members physically in person and others are joining, uh, electronically.
Is this an information item, sir?
It is.
It is.
I've got some questions. I, I don't agree, I wouldn't vote for that, just so you know where I'm at.
Electronic participation?
Right.
Okay.
Article four, the first one, it calls for, uh, the officer shall be a chairperson, a vice-chairperson, and a clerk to the Board. Uh, this is the first year in probably fifteen that we've had a vice-chair. Now, this is cutting it in stone that there's gonna be a vice-chair from now on.
And, those are the rules, and, uh, what envision is that each year you would have the bylaws would also be on the, uh, on that first organizational meeting, but yes, that is putting it in place, but you don't have to abide by that. But that's what the practice was this year, in order to put it together, to lay out the, that procedure, that's what, why it is in there. That's what occurred this year.
Right, and I, I appreciate that. Uh, but if we put it down as a bylaw, that really constitutes that, that's what we should do.
If you pass these bylaws, it would be, I think, all the members of the board would believe that was the intent of the board. But a new board coming in doesn't have to do that. Because I'll give you an example of what I put on the table there, also in that little article there, talks about small boards. If you were to adopt these rules, would have applied to what occurred when it, with the not-for-profits this year, is that those actions that you take at the end of that period, if that business isn't finished, the terminology is that it drops to the ground. So, you're not bound by anything the previous board put in place.
So, these would have to be reaffirmed every year at the first meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
So, if a new board came in next year and they didn't like the idea of a vice chair or they wanted a vice, vice chair, they could amend these and it would be something that would happen at the beginning organizational meeting of the year?
If you wanted to get technical, you would suspend the rules at that time. But honestly, they don't bind an incoming board. Unless, one of the things that Joshua actually suggested and I, and I think would be a good idea is that, I didn't put it there, but, because that's what wasn't proposed, but is that you put this in as an ordinance.
Oh.
It makes it more difficult to change during, for that to occur. And that's what all the reading and research that I did on bylaws is that you should make it difficult to change those. Because right now, the bylaws, you could change those bylaws every meeting if you just wanted to put it on the agenda. And as it's proposed, that you would have to provide it in writing the week before and then you could change it. But if you did it as an ordinance, you would have to go through the ordinance process of changing it.
But you're not suggesting an ordinance right now?
I'm not, but I'm...
Well, and I don't know that I'd go so far to say is that it, you know, that would be my recommendation. It's another option for doing it. And if there's concern about whether the bylaws are going to be changed routinely, then that's something that the board should consider. Just because there should, for, just for continuity's sake, the bylaws are probably something that you want to change very rarely. But these as written would basically be effective for a year from the first meeting in January to the end of the year. And then the next year, they would either be re-adopted the same as they were before or a supervisor could bring forward a whole new set of bylaws or amendments. And those would be voted on in the January meeting the following year.
And in your est...
What's that?
I still like the ordinance.
And in your estimation, and this is a question for both of you, are these fairly general? There's not a lot of specific policy-like language in here?
I tried to follow, honestly, I've tried to follow past practice. The only thing that I put in there to improve that isn't current and it goes back to those small board rules that I included in the last page of yours, is that I'd like to get around the area where we, you're just, you vote on something that you think that everybody understands, but they don't. And so, I'm, I go through and watch the meeting the next day to try to make sense of what you folks have put together and I try to formulate a motion based upon that. And what I've put in there is that it should be, according to the format that you've adopted this year, that they have that sheet in there, it should also include a proposed motion. So, folks know what the action is that you're considering. It doesn't mean it has to be in that form when you vote on it. You can change that anytime during the meeting, but it would be much, it would be very helpful to me trying to keep an accurate record of what's taking place if you adopted that.
So, this would be a starting premise? In other words, of the motion that would be proposed as kind of a best practice?
If it's something that you bring forward, the board brings forward, or a department head or somebody else brings something forward, is that it should be in the form of a motion that you want passed so everybody understands clearly what you're talking about to begin with. And then you can change it any way you want during your discussions.
So, Dennis, you can change this form to say, exact motion requested?
Action required. I, I've done one myself where I actually put in motion, second by, then write out what I think I'd like to see. You guys can change it. It gives you what the intent of the motion, what the whole action is.
Right.
Yeah. And we can change that. So, action request, write your own motion, and then the board can change it.
So, mostly what we put in here is pack, past practice. Committees, I mean, that's a real gray area for me because I tried to look at what was on the website and how you've made appointments to begin with. I don't know how you have the ability to make some of those appointments that the chairperson has made as it goes along. That's not clear to me, so I just included what I know, committees that you do appoint to. And that was the, by the code, those are committee appointments that are made according to, I think, the first meeting, you have to judicial magistrate nominating committee, that's a requirement. Provisions of Iowa Code, Chapter 28E, when you put together a 28E with some other entity and you're, and you put forth that there's going to be board members on that committee, committees by agreement, that's just kind of ad hoc committees and then special purposes really, the same sort of thing. But that's what those are included for.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I've got a question on Article 6, number 5.
That's one we were just discussing?
No. The chairperson shall place an item on the agenda for a subsequent meeting when directed by a majority of the board. How is the minority served there?
Trying to think how this occurred. The majority, the minority isn't served by that. I went back to the situation where you asked for an item to be placed on the agenda and it was moved seconded and the majority approved that it be placed on the board, on the agenda.
All right. Everything is talked about as far as past practice. As far as I know, any board member can bring anything to the chairperson and have it placed on the agenda that doesn't need approval.
Well, you folks know the history of that, those conversations better than I do because I wasn't privy to those, but that's not the way it was understood by me.
Well, I'd want to remove Section 5. I would not. It puts too much power in the hands of the chairperson. The chairperson has complete control over everything now.
Well, that's discussion for you folks to have.
I'd be happy to have it. That's fine.
I'd like to weigh in on this. I take that sentence as limiting the chairperson's power in the sense that if the current chairperson said, well, I'm not going to place that item on the agenda because I don't agree with it, which actually, if I may, is what happened when we talked about the funding for a certain nonprofit. The chairperson disagreed with placing it on the agenda. Supervisor Smith, Supervisor Clausen, and I, as the majority said, we are directing you, Mr. Chair, to place it on the agenda. Now, that was something that I didn't ultimately vote, but I, but I did...
I appreciate what, the way you voted.
Right. But I, but that's, I think, where the chairperson can't willy-nilly say, I'm not going to place it on the agenda because I don't want to. When there's three members who say you shall, sorry, but you shall.
Yep. That's the way it should be.
So, that was to, almost to limit the power of the chair in that sense. And then I think if the chair is hard-headed enough, and I hope that we don't have a chair who would be hard-headed enough not to place something on the agenda, I think a supervisor has every right to say, I have during concerns, something that wasn't placed on the agenda. I think it, it should be something that is, but I think this is a directive that a majority can force a chair to do this. That's, that's the way, I think it's a protection in some senses.
So, if I wanted something on the agenda and I sent it to the chair by Thursday morning, the chair chose not to put it on, then I would bring it up at the Tuesday meeting at the end and try and get a majority to have the chair put it on?
That's exactly what occurred. And that's why I put it in there.
And I think it should be a public, I don't want to get too far out on a limb, but it should be a public detriment if the majority, I mean, we're putting, codifying this really is saying, he has to or she has to, as the case may be. But I, I think it's a protection in that sense. And if the public hears that, I think they'll take that into account as well.
And then I suppose if the majority still doesn't agree with it, you're just kind of out of luck as the minority.
Well, the problem that I see is you don't get things aired unless a majority of the board wants to discuss it.
Unless you use your other comment section at the end and then of course, no decision can be made.
And that's when you would, that's when I envision what happened is you would have that discussion openly in front of the public and you would make a motion to, and then it would be up to the majority to put it on the agenda.
I don't like it.
The board could go a step further and say that a supervisor has a right to have an agenda item. I mean, that's really up to the board if they want to do that. If, it gets a little dicey if, if it's something that the supervisor wants to bring up, even if it's just a discussion item. If you're going to have a long discussion about county policy, really that, whatever it is, even if you're not taking action on it, it should be an agenda item. So, you may want to consider allowing supervisors without a majority vote of the board to at least have an agenda item for discussion. And then if you wanted to require a majority to place an action item on the agenda, you can do that. Again, it's, it's really up to how the supervisors want to do it.
That would work as long as it, you could put it on as a discussion item without someone having a veto over it.
At the time that you approve the agenda, it could be removed at that time too.
So, reverse the majority's to, Frank gets it off. I mean, I can see both, both sides. I like the offer of what you just said because being in the minority many times, I would certainly support being able to get something on the agenda because I, I may have a priority that wouldn't be anyone else's priority until they heard me speak about it. So, I like having, and going forward, I think that, that's courteous to all board members to be able to bring something forward because we all are elected and we all may have different priorities based on our constituents that we deal with.
And I would suggest for next week, if you're going to put this on as an action item, is that leave it pretty much the way it is right now and that if any supervisor has proposed changes, is that you bring them to the meeting to address those issues.
You to have it...
Pardon?
Bring it, you to have it incorporated in a separate section.
No, that you discussed it during the meeting. This is the document that we'll work from, but you can have, have a debate on particular items there if you're prepared to make changes.
So, for example, next week, this could be on as an action item and then any supervisor could say that we will approve or move to approve these bylaws as amended by adding any supervisor shall be able to place a discussion item on the agenda, but it requires a majority to place an action item, something like that. And I, I don't think that that's a, a bad idea because a discussion's going to happen either way. The discussion item will either happen by placing it on the agenda as a discussion item or during supervisor's concerns. So, I think I would support having any supervisor be able to place a discussion item because it's simply notifying the public and having more transparency in that sense, so...
Well, it really allows to the other supervisors to have a chance to think about the discussion because, you know, we got, you know, you don't want to have stuff sprung on you every week at the end where, you know, the only person who knows about it is the one who can't get it on the agenda. So, at least it gives an avenue that while it may not be your priority, it might be mine. It gives you time to think about how, how you're going to discuss it.
And I would suggest that, you know, you have it at the time that, for the agenda, for the backup, for the homework, any changes that you're, would propose, that you have it in the backup to go along with this so that any amendments that you have to the proposed bylaws.
The only thing on the timeline is, like, if I was going to, to bring that amendment, I would need the help of the attorney as you did and drafting it to get it correct. So, I don't know if the timeline of one week is...
You can...
Is appropriate, but...
Whenever you folks want to put it on.
And I'll maybe a couple of weeks down the road and then...
It works. That's fine.
Yeah. That gives everyone just a little bit more time to get it put together correctly.
Okay. Any other, other items?
I think eight's going too far.
Joshua, you're on.
You should have got it.
Are you, which are you talking about?
In which respect, Larry?
Eight, which one, Larry? Section eight or Article?
Article six.
Article six. Oh, dogger dog.
Well, and I don't, I mean, this language was not specific to a recommendation made by me, but my understanding is, is that it's based on, part of it's based on a rule from the Iowa Legislature. And the 10-minute rule...
I can live with the 10-minute rule.
Matthew Ung knows that was placed.
We, we call that the ung rule.
But in that case, I appreciated that long slide tape presentation.
And you can, and that's what I assured him that you, that he would be able to do that. But Joshua pointed out that that showed up after that presentation.
Any other items?
Well, we didn't resolve that one.
Which, which part do you have a problem with?
And shall be respectful of other elected officials and avoid referencing or questioning the motives of another elected official. That might be fine for the state because you do get party affiliations down there that are diametrically opposed, but on a county board, we very seldom have that.
I just read that as good manners.
Well, if you don't have good manners, you shouldn't be here.
I would take that as language we could add. If you don't have good manners, you shouldn't be here. I, I don't, I think it's just a good reminder that, that we'll be respectful of one another and not question the motives. I don't think it's anything...
Yeah, this thing is getting a lot, well drawn out, but in the roll call votes, roll calls shall be called alphabetically except the chairperson shall be last called last. Now, as far as I know, Pat, you've always alternate that, alternated that week to week.
I, for a period of time, because Mr. Clausen, you reprimanded me a long time ago for calling it the way it is, but that is...
Nicely, I hope.
But that is, yes, but that is in the rules. Parliamentary procedure, that is the way a roll call is called.
But that is not the way we've done it. Is that correct?
Right. After, after you chastised me a long time ago for doing that.
You're going to have to refresh my memory.
Well, but that is parliamentary procedure.
Anyway, that's the only questions I had on this.
Okay. We'll place it back on in two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
All right. Rural Economic Development, David Gleiser. Need a motion to authorize chairman to sign closing documents with Countryman Financial Group loan. We approved this last time. You're, you're the new David Gleiser?
I am the new David Gleiser. Very big shoes to fill. David asked, because of his journey to Washington DC, that I step in and present the chairman respective of a motion to sign the closing loan agreements, economic development loan agreements with Countryman Financial Group for construction in Mobile, Iowa. There's an interlocutory agreement, interdepartmental agency agreement, and a... and a loan and servicing agreement that David'd like to present to get that loan locked down.
Need a motion? We actually approved this process last week, week before.
There's been no change in anything?
Not to my knowledge. David gave me a memo and it didn't state there any changes, and that legal review that defines.
Josh, it's the same.
Well, he did provide the documents to me. I recommended some changes. He indicated that they had been incorporated in. I, he didn't provide the documents to me to review after that, so that's about as much as I know of the process. Well, based on his email, he said the changes had been incorporated, but like I said, I didn't see the documents after that point.
I'll answer any questions with my limited knowledge of this area.
Need a motion?
Will you move it, what you hope that, not knowing what the changes were and not knowing if they're in there, but I guess I'll have a leap of faith and move it.
Need a second?
Well. These the same documents that were included in the packets? I assume they are.
I don't think Joshua knows, he hasn't seen it.
I'm not, it would appear to me that the documents in the packet are the same ones that I reviewed the first time. And I only had a couple of recommendations. My, my main one was that the the loan agreement would say at some point that he would retain the business in operation during the life of the loan. And that was my main concern that, I mean.
What would that fall under?
What we've done before is added it under scope of undertaking in the loan servicing agreement.
And is that language incorporated in there to your, to the best of your knowledge?
Well, I don't, I don't see it in the documents in the, in the packet. I don't know if.
Is there any rush to have this done, or can it wait a week until?
Well, and my understanding is that there was a rush because of a closing date that they have already passed, actually, but they were waiting for the funds from the county in order to do that.
Do you know?
I was unaware of any document, last minute document change wasn't addressed what I was given.
I don't, I don't think that it's something that should hold up signing off on the agreement. I mean, Dave and I have talked about how a best practice would be to have a separate development agreement when we do these loans that specify exactly what the obligations of the, of the borrower are. Because we've, we had a, we don't want to be in a situation where we've, we've made the loan and they're making every monthly payment, but they're not actually operating the business. And, you know, if that's the case, we'd rather make them pay the money back and we can loan it to someone who is fulfilling the obligations.
But without.
That's my thinking.
But without that language in here, while that is comforting for the future and good, and I think without that language in concrete, we may not have recourse as a county on that particular provision. Is that correct?
There's an argument that you do, but it's not as explicit as I would like it to be.
What's your pleasure?
I'd rather wait till next week until the attorney goes over it. I mean, it's not, it's just good business.
I'll withdraw my motion then.
I would move to defer to the following week until there's time to adequately review.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Thank you, sir. He's got those down there. All right. County Weed Commissioner. Consideration of the annual Weed Commissioner appointment and report to the Iowa Department of Agriculture.
Getting stand-ins all over today, so I'm standing in for Jared Jepson. Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship requires that this form be filled out and submitted to them each year. This appoints Jared Jepson, which the board acted on January 2nd, I believe. But this authorized the chair to sign.
Need a motion? Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay, okay.
Now you got the guy on the agenda, so. First item I had today was, we have an old VPIC attachment. It is designed to be mounted on a behind-the-front-wheel scarifier. Motor graders have either a front lift group that holds our V plow, or there is another type of scarifier that mounts in behind the wheel and allows it to dig into the soil. A VPIC is a, an attachment that goes on the motor grader that uses a rotating bit. We use these when we're out into areas where we have washboard and such that we're trying to get down and get that washboard broken up, get the road leveled back up. Our last motor grader that had a behind-the-wheel scarifier was sold three years ago. City of Sioux City approached Murphy Tractor looking for one of these because they have that very same scarifier within their fleet. The guy at Murphy Tractor pointed him at us as a way that they might save some money. And ours has a little bit of rust on it, it doesn't have a full set of bits. The city has taken it, tested it, everything works on their equipment, and they would like to buy it. The price I'm recommending is $3,100, which is roughly 60% of value of new. It's going into the governmental body.
County engineer be authorized to sell the V.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All right.
Thank you. Next, I have a permit for the installation of a new water line within the right-of-way of 170th Street. This water line will serve a new irrigator on the opposite side of the road.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second? All right. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay, consider a permit?
There's three copies of that permit, so I want to give the chair a little time. The next one we have is a permit to work within the right-of-way for Andy Lehman, representing Mid-American Energy. The actual utility pole line is being placed on private easement, but they will be accessing it from the county right-of-way of Old Highway 75. We're requiring that they put out signs warning of utility work ahead and that they take appropriate action within the county right-of-way to protect the traveling public. Recommend approval.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Next, we have a Hungry Canyons project agreement for the construction of a stream stabilization structure. Hungry Canyons is providing 80% of the construction costs up to a maximum project cost of $14,895. The balance of the project will be supplied by the Secondary Road Fund. This is for West Fork Little Sioux River Tributary project that we applied for and were successful in getting funds.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay, next.
Two copies of this agreement for the. Next, we have several projects that require cultural resources and archaeological historical investigation. These projects are on either federal aid-eligible roads, or they are federal aid projects. The D-50 project, which is our grading for paving south of Anthem, is one such project, even though it's funded locally, to maintain its eligibility for federal aid in the future since it is on a federal aid corridor. We need to conduct a cultural resources survey before this occurs. We contacted four companies. Bear Creek Archaeology submitted a responsive quote for doing all the projects while they're over here. I recommend approval of their contract.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. You're just full of paper.
We killed a couple of trees today. Next one we have is the approval of the fiscal year 2016 Secondary Road Budget for the Iowa Department of Transportation. In most years, the DOT budget and the county budget that was approved for the, you know, just county funds resemble each other very closely. This year, between the passage of the county budget, which was due March 15th, and the passage of the DOT budget due April 15th, we've had the intervention of the 10 cent per gallon gasoline tax increase, which is making a significant positive impact to the income side of our, our budget. We were also able to add three very needed projects to the current, what's called the accomplishment year that we'll discuss when we get to the county road program. This will require that we amend the county secondary road budget for fiscal year 2016 after the beginning of the fiscal year. I don't know if the board has any questions. The current year reflects our amended budget number one, which we amended back in December. And the, the next fiscal then is for the current year with the three new projects included in that $4.4 million.
Need a motion?
Is that what it's going to affect you, 4.4 million?
The, we'll need to reflect, have the county budget reflect both the increase in income and the increase in the construction budget that went up by $700,000 as proposed in the DOT, in this DOT budget.
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay, all right.
This requires the signature of the chair and the auditor. We only have one official copy. And finally, the five-year program that we premiered last week. In that interim, one project was added to fiscal year 2019. SimCo awarded the county $407,000 toward a $800,000 request for an STP project on Port Neal Road. This is the third phase of Port Neal Road improvements. The first phase being the project regrading the intersection at 225th Street and Port Neal Road that'll be, that'll be constructed in fiscal year 2016. This is fully a Sioux City project. The next phase of that will be from where the 225th Street intersection project leaves off right near the north end of the Rest Area property, just to give you reference in the field. Down to 235th Street intersection is a combined city-county project that I believe right now is looking at fiscal year 2017. We requested unsuccessfully that the portion between 235th Street and basically the north property line of Geleda be included as a third project. We were disappointed not to get the full amount we requested. Right now, I've just tagged that with special funds. We have a couple of fiscal years to work out whether we can get additional federal aid from the region and maybe bump this project back to 2020, that would be the ideal. And then whether or not it might be eligible at some point in time for ordinary renewal funds to help cover that remaining balance of the project. It's roughly about a million dollars for the project because it involves extensive shoulder widening, some grade corrections, and then placement of a Portland cement concrete pavement. It'll then match from the Port Neal Road intersection all the way up to South Bridge Drive. We'll have all fairly new pavement in that corridor. So I'm hoping we have more support from Sioux City and the region next year, but at least we've got a placeholder now in the five-year program.
Very good.
Assuming more funds come along.
Thank you, sir.
We need approval.
We need to approve that, need a motion? I'd move it, need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All right.
Thank you very much, and if you want to consult your calendars, we talked about a view of going out and taking a look at projects. Right now, the dates that are available, 28th of April, and then the May 12th, 19th, and 26th. That would be proposed for morning ahead of Board of Supervisors meetings. We could maybe take a look at that for next week and see when it would be favorable for the
Very good.
Board to be able to attend that.
Could you give me those again?
April 28th, May 12th, 19th, and 26th. Any other questions, sir?
Mr. Butler?
This is a deferred item from last week. What involves the front steps to LEC, they are deteriorating, they're deteriorating rather fast. And with item number 16 on the agenda, there's a question where this should be delayed, or this is pretty much an emergency thing that should be done now for the safety of the people going in and out of the LEC. We do have money available. If you turn to page two, the CIP number, fund number 360 financial update, you'll see of all the projects we have planned for this current year. There's a few there we haven't started because the study potentially could impact what we do with Prairie Hills. Also, at the end of the day, when we're all done, if we do all the projects this year, we still have 393,000 left this year, it's unobligated. We have about 18 months to spend this money. So with that said, we do have money to do this project here, potentially the elevator project. And I guess, now, I guess it's to fill the board. Do we wait and do this particular project after the study? Or is there, and I don't know how long the study will take, because the study does cover everything. CIP, remodeling, energy, it covers the whole program here. So I don't know if we want to wait for that to come back, or is this something we should take care of now? You can see that we did have a next year CIP budget on the third page there, we had $114,000 budgeted. We could move that up to this year, which would mean less borrowing next year potentially, unless we find another project due. When we do our loans, we do them as capital. CIP, improvements, modifications, remodeling, equipping, county buildings. So we could use this money anywhere on any of our county buildings. We didn't be specific to a certain building, which is really the way we should go because it gives a lot of flexibility to handle anything that could come up besides what we got planned or defer what we had planned for '16. But a lot of this may depend, too, if we go ahead with the study with the Baker Group, because like I say, it does cover everything. And I don't know if Mike had any comments on the front steps? They have patched them, but those patches do not last very long. And it is deteriorating.
Something's undermining the base.
Mike headed Building Services. The foundation at LEC's been sinking for several years.
Since it was constructed.
Right, so this is just a problem that's now arising because of, because of some of that settling. We actually had to cut holes and pack dirt back in there, but they couldn't get far enough back without ripping everything up. So what we did is we made a fix to get us by until we can start these stairs over again. So it's, it's a safety issue. We definitely need to get on this.
We just don't know how much is undermined under there or what we're going to find. In one of the pictures, it's a little coincidental, we found pop cans. And when the concrete gave way, there were pop cans where they actually poured the footing for the poles. So no wonder there's some erosion there. There's, you know, things there with air in there, you know, lets loose. But it's something really probably needs to be done.
What is, can I ask you a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
What is the estimate of 115,000 based on? And do we know? And do we know, will this ultimately solve? I mean, we're not just talking resurfacing, but we're talking a complete replacement.
It'll be everything, everything replaced.
And what is that ba, what's the rough estimate based on outside contractors, vendors?
It's just what, we kind of look at other products around the city, size.
Okay.
And what they spent. So, that's kind of what we guess, our guess.
Actually, we have an engineer, his name is Rose from Bacon Creek, who's going to probably give us an estimate, all right? And he's connected to Regina at RLM because of the jail. RLM did the jail. Now, I wouldn't want to be responsible for anything in those jail without an engineer and an architect. Because there's, you know, what do you, you don't, you don't know what you're going to run into when you start taking it out.
Yeah, when you start pulling it out, the part up next to the building, you know, the doors always stick on and on, everything's kind of moving, everything, it all went along, all sort of.
Yeah.
Once you open that concrete up, and we see what's underneath it, and how much actually needs to be refilled back in there, packed, everything up to coat. We need to do the, the way the handicap comes out. You can see all that's all busted up, the lights have actually shattered because of the building movement. And it moved, and it actually busted the concrete, which busted the light. Them lights haven't worked for, I don't know, for at least four years that I've been here. Because of the movement, it has sheared, you know, it's just, there's just several things.
So, the action item, or the action required for today on the agenda is the motion to approve the hiring of an architect to draw up plans for the new steps of the LEC building, correct?
Right.
So, if that, and I'm just guessing, is, let's say 12% of the total project cost, we could move forward on that end without necessarily obligating the shift from FY '16 to '15?
Right.
We could have that done and looked at without necessarily taking action today on moving? Is that everyone else's shared understanding?
I'm fairly confident that it'll be over. We're going to have to bid it out, so we have to have an engineer's estimate on what it is to be able to bid it out.
And there has been some talk too, redesign the front entry steps, because there's a mass of entry steps there. Maybe downsize that to a certain size where it's in such a maintenance problem. Also, the architect, whoever does it, should come back with maybe two or three designs of what it might look like, so the board can look at them to have an idea of what this would look like.
I just wanted to be clear that we're not, we're not voting right now to move from FY '16 to '15.
No, 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 no.
This is to.
Getting plans.
I have a question though, or just a comment when I, and I'm glad you clarified a little bit of how you got the architect name, but I guess this begs the question on, do we need a better pathway of having like a qualified architect list? I mean, I think there's probably more than one architect that would be qualified maybe to redesign the front steps. I don't want to necessarily slow it down, but just handpicking an architect or handpicking professionals to do jobs, I think we need to get away from that practice and get like a qualified list. And the process to go through that, that's why I have a hard time just choosing an architect without opening up the process. It doesn't seem in the best interest of transparency and how I would, I don't want to go forward necessarily just handpicking without having a process.
Actually, I called, I called Mr. Rose at Bacon Creek and asked him if he was interested, and he said yes, he would, and that he would work with RLM or Gina because they did the jail. So, it's not a matter of picking an architect, I don't think any other architect's going to touch it.
But that's not, you know, I have, I have a friend that's an architect, and he said he'd be very interested in bidding it out. So, you know, whether he gets it and actually looks at it.
Well, bidding out an architect's a whole nother process. I don't.
I know that.
Anybody bids out architects.
They have qualified lists of, I think when projects are done, sometimes you have more than one architect submit a design. I mean, it just begs the question of a pathway of a qualified list of professionals to do, of who we call on to do work for us.
Yeah, I, I've got to agree. You just can't say we're going to hire so, so and so.
How has it been done in the past?
That way.
Just that way?
We've done it that way.
Forever?
That way forever.
Oh, yes, we have.
But as we're doing now, we're changing many things of how we've done it in the past. So, it would just be an opportunity to get a list together going forward. And if not on this project, if it's, you know, if time is of the essence and we're not able to use best practice this time, I would certainly hope that in the future we could.
I would say that's fine, we can put together something from here out. We have the same situation with the elevator. I called West Plains. They did the freight elevator with RLM. So, they knew what they were doing coming in, so, you know. They were here before, did the freight elevator. Know how that stuff works.
And I realize there aren't as many options for elevators, but there certainly seems to be a lot of architects around. And a lot of local architects, and I just, in the, I guess.
I personally didn't, thought we should use somebody else other than RLM, but both engineers recommended RLM because they've worked with them on the freight elevator and the LEC.
Well, I think in the future that would be a good best practice. I think for this one, it does seem like there's a reason and rhyme to
Yeah.
this particular project.
Not talking big bucks here.
I feel comfortable moving on, at least the drawing up of plans to know what's in there without moving the CIP from FY '16 to '15 necessarily just yet, so.
Hi Doug. Dennis, would you be willing, I know that the city, because part of this is for my discussion with some of the city council members, they do use qualified lists. Would you be willing in your next meeting, your city-county meeting, maybe just to bring that up on how they go about that process? And maybe we could.
We are having a meeting tomorrow morning, eight o'clock, Mark and I could bring that up.
Okay, would you mind? And just, and bring something back, at least for maybe some of us to look at just as a template, maybe to go forward.
Chair and I is back and forth, and we can talk tomorrow about that.
Thank you.
So, what are we voting on?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Did you make a motion? There was no second. Did you make a motion?
I did not, but I will make one now.
And what is your motion?
So, I would move to approve the hiring of Doug Rose from Bacon Creek as the architect to draw up plans for new steps to the LEC building.
And you have, and he wishes to use Regina at RLM if there's an architect needed. They might not know that until they dig it out and find out more to it than.
It says where, the motion is to hire an architect.
Right.
And you're saying Doug Rose. So, then why is Regina mentioned in this? I don't understand.
Regina is the architect.
Well, I'm maybe a little confused now. It says the architect recommended is Doug Rose from Bacon Creek. Is he the?
See, that's what I thought, he was the architect, that's why I brought him.
I would, I would, I would say the motion should be to hire Doug Rose from Bacon Creek as the engineer and the RLM architectural firm to design and create a cost for bid.
And in that case, I would.
Pardon me?
That's what you're saying, to prepare bid documents?
Right, right.
And then in that case, I would second that motion.
Okay. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, next item, Board of Supervisors, Mark Monson again, here we go. This is to place door openers on the LEC after the steps are finished and on transparoid as well as motor vehicle. Motor vehicle got added, so it would be, what's your estimate?
Eleven thousand. I could be off $2 there, but it's eleven thousand, that's for all six doors.
Right. Discussion.
And these doors are situated so that they can have door openers on them now?
Yep, yep.
With the exception of the front of the LEC.
Right. And by doing this, by doing all six of them and getting them all up to code, we're actually going to save about $300 per door opened by buying all of them. I just got that information today.
Of course, you might have to delay it because you're not going to buy those, yeah.
Well.
You can buy them.
Either way, you're going to have to have them anyway, so I mean, they'd be on until we tear those steps out. I mean, they're, they're not going to disappear, per se. Either way, we, if we don't tear those steps up for two months, you still need to go get them. You see what I'm saying? I mean, either way, we still got to have them there, they're not going to go nowhere. And when the steps get redone, they'll, they'll still be there, ready to work even then.
Are you talking about installing them before the doors are fixed?
Oh, yeah. No, doors are.
If the doors are jamming at the bottom.
Yeah, well, we adjust them all the time. They're working. I just readjust them again just Monday morning. So, I mean, they're, they're working good. But when they tear the steps out, they have to go all the way inside the front doors. That concrete not only goes up to the doors, it actually protrudes into the doors. So, for a period of time, when they start fixing these doors, or fixing the new concrete for the stairs, the front doors of the LEC will probably be taken off and the enters will be locked. And then everybody will be using the side doors and possibly the back door of the LEC to get in and out until the project is done in front. But all door openers will still be there. If we purchase them now and get them in there and get them installed, they will work up until the point of construction starting, and they'll be there the day that they open them back up. So, we'll.
Do they work with new doors, if by chance we should have to get new doors? Or do you have to buy new openers to go on new doors?
We have new doors in the bid, I mean if.
Oh, there are new doors in the bid? Oh, there are new doors in the bed? Okay. Oh.
No, 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 no steps.
Right. At one point in time, we talked about new doors too, so I...
No, that's not in the bid. Now, if something happened and, uh...
Well, that's up to the, that's up to the architect and engineer.
Yeah, if something happens and they say it, we're going to have to tear them out, and it'd be just as cheap to replace it with new ones at that time. And that's a choice that you guys would have to make at that time.
That should be a part of that bid.
Right.
I'd like to ask one question. I didn't know if it's relevant. When you're talking about it's being excavated underneath there, is there any thought to mudjacking that and bringing that back up?
Either way, the, the concrete i- is being eaten away. So, no matter what, the concrete's got to be replaced no matter what. Now, the top of the stairs where it goes to the building, they've already, we've already packed dirt, but we don't, the, I want to say that the, there is metal or something that they put down before they pour the concrete on top of the stairs. All that is eroded away. So, I mean, there's other things underneath there that got to be replaced no matter what. So, that front does need to be opened up.
Okay.
Plus, aren't those people working for the DNR and the stuff, they want to do some drilling under the steps?
Well, they're drilled beside them. And, and there's always a chance when they got it opened up, they may want to jump in there and drill a couple of holes. Now, I haven't seen them guys around for quite some time now, so I don't know what happened.
I wonder if those contracts have gone by the way. If the state has not renewed them, because they, they were the one paying the freight on that.
They disappeared awful fast. I don't know, I don't know where they are. I have not seen them.
Well, I think for, for now, coming into, I assume ADA compliance and making it accessible for, for our citizens, I would move that, uh, Building Services be given permission to install the openers at the purchase cost aforementioned on the front doors of the buildings.
And this would come from the CIP funds we have on hand on allocating the approval to the buildings.
Okay. Need a second?
Second.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed say nay. Okay, here we go. Number sixteen, fifteen. Jeremy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. It sounds, uh, from our previous discussions, like having a facilities plan would be a good idea. And so, as a follow-up to last week's discussion and placement of agenda materials, I've asked Dave Jorgensen from the Baker Group to, um, to come and, and present, uh, information on, uh, a long-term facilities plan and how that group that holds a state master contract might, might proceed. And, um, just to give information and take any questions that you may have.
Very good. I have some extra cards, sir. I see a few on the table already. Forgive me if this was a duplication for you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, first of all, thanks a lot for inviting me. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. Uh, we've been up here doing quite a bit of work already with the school district, so we've got some, some experience right here in the community. Um, we've got the PowerPoint up on the board there as well for anybody who wants to follow along. So, let's start by going through this to let you know why we're here. Uh, we'll talk about our state contract first, then we'll talk about our company a little bit, what we do bring to the table, talk about the building systems that we look at, well, when we're inside your building, and our focus and objectives. We're basically a concept to completion process, so we're involved early on in the start of the process, all the way through the, to the implementation of the project. And that's a little bit different than you normally used to see. So, we'll kind of go through the details of why. Um, if you go to that first page, you'll see a map of the United States. When we're working with existing buildings, the process of design-build is proven to be very effective. Because you get your contractors involved up front, we stay involved all the way through the process, we work with the design teams, and we come up with value to your process to, to improve your buildings. All buildings have a life expectancy of a lot of years when it comes to the structure. I mean, you're talking fifty, hundred, hundred-fifty-year-old buildings sometimes. But your infrastructure is only designed to last for about thirty years. That's your heating, your cooling, your lighting. And the last thirty years have been the most difficult on buildings because of all the improvements that have been made. Just look at the computer world and what's happened over the last thirty years. Technology has changed the whole world. So, it's really important right now to really pick up with buildings moving forward. When we look at a building, we look at moving them forward for another thirty years. Uh, and that's where our main objective is. If you look at that map of the United States, the states in white do not have design-build contracting available. Iowa's one of those, as well as North Dakota, Wisconsin, Alabama. So, we can't do true design-build contracting. Now, if you look at another part, another process called performance contracting, which allows companies to come in, look at your energy cost guarantee, uh, that those costs will pay for the improvements. It's called performance contracting. You take North Dakota off, Wisconsin off, and Alabama off, you still have Iowa, where we've never been able to get the legislation passed to be able to do performance contracting or, um, design-build contracting. So, what we've done as a company is designed a program that fits with all the state criteria and all the state laws. Now, you can flip to the next page. And some of those I'll probably be repeating a little bit, but the, um, we, we developed this to take the best of both worlds. The one thing that's really nice about the Iowa law, and one of the reasons the other laws haven't become here, is that it keeps the, the bid laws in place. You still have to bid the process to get it done. And I think that's what is lacking in the design-build world. You have to put your trust in the contractors and the design team to give you the best price available, and it's simply not, um, visible to you. With the, with the bid laws, you see everything that happens. So, basically, we've developed our program to get involved as a design-build, but still put everything out for bids in an open book process, so you see everything. In fact, you have more transparency probably through this process than any other process available. So, it really gives you a lot of assurances that, that everything's being taken care of. Now, we've implemented over about twenty-five million dollars of this type of program in the state so far. Um, we were doing this before the state ever got involved, because we were following all the bid laws, all the criteria of everything. The state kind of followed us for a few years to see what we were actually doing. And finally, one day, they came up and said, hey, and this is through the Department of Administration, uh, DAS, can we work with you to do the same thing? And we said, certainly. So, they published a request for proposal, a request for qualified providers, similar to what you were talking about from Architectural Forum. And they got about fifteen companies that, that applied for it. Uh, we're the only ones that were granted a contract to do what we're doing. Uh, again, because of our process. So, the main reason I wanted to take you through all that is the process that we use allows us to stay engaged with the, with the buildings from concept to completion. It follows exactly all the bid laws and same. Okay? All right. So, as a company, here's what we bring to the table for you. We've been around since nineteen sixty-three, so it's been a good solid company. Um, we've got four offices in Iowa. Two of them are right in Des Moines, one's in Quad Cities that we're having a grand opening on tomorrow, and then one in North Liberty. But we go across the state to do this program. So, we've done, uh, programs as close to Spencer Island and with the city, or with the school district here in Sioux City as well. We employ five hundred and fifty employees, got twelve professional design engineers on staff and one architect on staff. Those people are not there to replace your local people, but they're there for expertise for us to use in studying the buildings. The next slide down. Thank you for doing that, by the way. I forgot about that. Yeah, I don't know what happened to the remote. Um, is the different departments that we have. We have a mechanical department, sheet metal department, design engineering. Uh, we have forty-five service trucks on the road every day, servicing everything that we put in. We have a fire and life safety department for your fire alarm systems, security for your closed-circuit TV systems and door alarms, and temperature controls, which is your building automation. The one thing extra that we bring to the table is the funding options. It's difficult to do these projects sometimes with all the money at one time. So, the decision has to be made, and do you phase it out over a period of years and deal with your budgets? Or do we put a funding process in place up front for you and, and finance it up front, do all the project ones? Totally your option, either way you want to go. Right now, the funding's so inexpensive for these types of projects in the three percent range, it, it's almost more economical to borrow the money and get it done all at one time. But those are your, are your decisions as we move forward. Go to the next page. Thank you. On the building systems that we look at, if we were to come in a building like this, we study your HVAC, which is your heating, ventilating, and air conditioning equipment. We take a look at all the major components, your piping, uh, the boiler system, the chiller system, what moves air through the building, how you're moving air through the building, how you're controlling it. We look at the lighting, uh, the electrical power coming into the building, uh, study basically everything that's there to see what's going on. Is that equipment good for another ten, fifteen years? Or is it so inefficient it should be replaced now? Or can it be made efficient? It's not always remove and replace. Sometimes it's just renovating what you've got or using as much as you have. We're not here to tear everything out and start over. We want to reuse as much as we can. Indoor air quality, or, excuse me, uh, talk about the electrical systems. Lighting is, in the recent year or two, has really changed. LED lighting has come a long, long way. I think you've got TH probably in quite a bit of the building. TH, yeah. And, uh, even the, the new LEDs have come up in quality and down in price. And that's something we're certainly considering. We did three auditoriums, I think, over for the school district with new LEDs. Renewable energy is fun to talk about, but quite honestly, in a public entity, unless you can take advantage of the tax credits or have an investor that will, it's difficult to do. But we do have the capability of doing that. Security, you've got security all over the place in this building with your card access, cameras. Uh, we bring that expertise to the table. Obviously, not in energy conservation, it's more building safety and life safety. Your building envelopes we look at. This would be a very unique building because you're on the historical list. Uh, so, when you start dealing with, with windows and things like that, we've got to be very careful. Uh, but we look at the roofs, thermal barrier of the building, we do infrared, uh, technology to, uh, take pictures and see where the, see where it's leaking at, basically. So, we take all those things and roll them into our, what's our focus and objectives. First is the energy and operational savings, not necessarily first, but one of the important ones. We always look at your energy cost. We benchmark your costs to see where you're at. And we take a look at your cost per square foot and what you're paying for utilities. We work with the utility company to get the best rates that we can. Uh, operational efficiencies, what's that piece of equipment costing to maintain it these days? If it's getting old, is it nickel and dime near to death? Does it make sense to replace it or not? It's one of the things we help you work through. Um, capital equipment replacement needs, those are always surprising for, for a board, uh, with budgets. You know, you, you get things that creep up on you, like, like the, uh, the steps that everybody forgot to put in their budget or whatever. Those things happen. We try to, uh, circumvent that by taking a look at the future and what you're going to need in each of the buildings that you have us look at. Um, recommissioning, sometimes we can save, we can improve your environment by just fixing what's here and recommissioning. Buildings change, the use changes in buildings over the years. You put walls where they didn't exist before, and that has an impact on how everything flows through the building. So, we take a look, can we fix that? Can we make it right or better than what it has in the past? Sustainability issues, if you have some, kind of goes back to the, uh, renewable energy and some of those things. It's really the carbon credits and all that, you know, saving the carbon of the world and saving the trees. Totally great, uh, to be doing that. We do those things whether you have the sustainability, sustainability mission or not. We just do things right to save energy. We try to do these as budget neutral as possible. If you're working on older, inefficient equipment, that needs to be replaced and it's been costing a lot to maintain, usually by the time we're done putting it in, you can take those savings and pay for the, the equipment over a period of time. And that all depends on how, what the e- extended life of the equipment is and, and the payback. We help you work through a lot. So, if we go to the, um, uh, the chart that you will be seeing now on page ten, the pre-construction or the programming, schematics, uh, design documents, CDs, the bid, construction, that's your whole process that you normally go through. Normally, as a contractor, the contractor gets involved done on the bid day. Everything gets put out for, for engineering and the architectural work, the plans get put out. That's when the contractors get engaged, when the price goes on the table. We get engaged way up front. We're involved right up front, uh, right in the programming process of it. So, to do that, there's a four-step process that we go through. Now, the one we're talking about here today, uh, step one is a preliminary building equipment survey. We actually come in and go through the buildings with your team of people. You guys know your buildings better than we do, and get to know what your equipment is, how it's being operated, what's on the short term, what's on the long term, and bring back a full report to you as, as the customer and go through that with you. We do a lot of pictures. Um, and that, that, by the way, is detailed in further pages, but I don't think we've got time tonight to go through every one of these PowerPoints. But there is a list of all the stuff that we do look at. It's in this step of the process, we get all of your utility bills. We, we benchmark those, look at your cost per square foot again, your BTUs per square foot over the last three years and see all you're doing. And that's in every one of the buildings. Step one, there's absolutely no cost to you. There is a cost to us to do the process. We get a lot of people involved, including our engineers and our, and our expertise that comes out of our company. It's our way of getting to know you, getting to know your buildings, and you getting to know us before we start moving forward. There, all we take is a letter and ten. It basically gives us permission to go into the buildings and gather the, the data that we need with your assistance and guidance. And that we're going to come back, and you're going to have a team of people like yourselves that will sit down and take a look at that process. So, that's, at the end of that, if you say, why thank you, we're done. No cost, no obligation. Now, we hope to move forward from that, of course. Uh, but that happens sometimes. Sometimes it just doesn't make sense to you or it doesn't make sense to us to move forward. So, you have an opening at the end of each one of these steps where each one stands independently. The detailed audit is where we get into dollars and steps. So, the preliminary report, we come back and tell you what's in each building and what really needs attention, but it's only preliminary. We haven't done any pre-engineering or projections of energy savings yet. From the preliminary, you give us instructions of what you want us to look at and to put budget items to. So, we take that and what's called the detailed audit, and we provide that for you. Our engineers get involved, our estimators that do these projects day in and day out get involved, and we put enough pre-engineering together to get you pretty solid budgets. The most we've ever missed a budget on was two million dollars to the positive. We estimated at seven million, came out of five, just because of the pro- the way the process was working. We actually got more money, uh, or more project than we'd anticipated. Normally, we're within about three percent on our budgets. Pleasantville Schools, as an example, is a, a million, one we missed by fifty dollars, you know, so. But we've never blown one. We always come in really solid on our budget. So, when we come back with a detailed audit, tell you this is what it's going to cost. It's a, a dollar incentive you could take to the bank. To your decision-makers to say, here's what it's going to cost us. And they're pretty solid. Um, the other thing that we do in the detailed study is estimate the savings that you're going to receive, um, from the energy and from the operational cost. That will be in the budget as well. Um, everything that we put in there will be a separate line item, so you can pick and choose by line and by building. In other words, like the lighting might be one line item, boilers could be another line item, chillers could be another line item. It's your project, it's your details. When we get down to the end of it, we work through the spreadsheet with you as a group, as a committee. Here's what we want to move forward with, take these off, they don't make sense. Maybe the, the, uh, equipment's in good shape and the payback's too long. Doesn't make sense to replace it. But we've studied it, so we're going to put it in there for you. So, once we're through with the detail, then it's time to make decisions when we move forward. That's when we enter into the design phase. State law does require that if we're the construction manager and the project planner, we can't do the final designs for you. It has to be done by either a, um, professional engineering team or an architectural team or both, depending on the complexity of the project. So, we reach out at that point with your guidance. We may want to publish a request for qualified provider. Here's the project. We sit down as a team and interview them and decide who's the best fit for that project. If there's one that you just favor, state law allows us to choose who to use. So, if, we can go either way that the board wants to go when it comes to that. Um, so, then once the final design's done, that's where the project is put out for bid. Uh, we do multi-level, uh, primes that we'd have. Could be mechanical, electrical, building automation, general contractor. All those are multiple primes direct to you, so we don't have multiple levels of markup. It's all direct to you as the, as the county. We manage that process for you. So, all the bids that come in, our job starts the next day. Are these qualified bids? Are they qualified contractors? Can they meet our deadlines? Can they meet our safety standards? Your buildings are going to continue to operate no matter what we do to them. You've got people in here, you're going to have to keep working. And that is so critical to have a safety on site, making sure that everything is run perfectly and that the people are protected. So, particularly in the LEC and units like that, it makes a little bit more challenging even for us. But we're used to working with those things, we work around them. So, when it comes to the implementation, then we come down, we make the recommendation, which contractors, which products that we should use. It's your final decision which ones you take. And then we sign the contracts and keep moving forward. So, that's kind of the quick overview. The, the rest of the pages in there are, are detailed, highly detailed by each one of those steps. And you can read through those at your, at your will, or we can go through them now if you like. I kind of covered the high points for you. So, with that, I guess we just turn it over to questions and...
I guess I have just a basic question. Um, Supervisor Taylor, you, how did you know about the Baker Group?
I guess I was wondering... Sure, through the Sioux City Schools, um, acting as an energy specialist for the schools. Um, and I wouldn't say as much coordination, it's actually something that the school district had gone down on the road before an energy conservation program was even in place. But the school district has a, a two and a half million dollar loan through the Iowa Energy Bank because the Baker Group holds the state master contract, and they're the only group. They, uh, work hand in hand with the schools, and they have over two hundred projects that are being implemented right now at the same time with a payback of about four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to a rebate, so.
And the rebates are around four to five hundred thousand dollars on that project.
Right.
And, and I, I forgot to mention that. We work with the utility company very closely. They have a great rebate program in Americas, it's second to none. And every dime we can get from that to go towards a project this less money that you have to spend. Now, there are no zero funds available right now through the Energy Bank. Um, and just because we're approved by the Energy Bank doesn't mean that we involve them in your program. If they hit the funds, we would recommend they be involved, but they don't, we're not being overshadowed and overlooked by any state agency. All they've done is said, yeah, you're approved to do this in the state, and if it's on our projects, you're certainly approved to do those. That answer?
Uh, yes, thank you. I guess I, because we did, what did we do before we did an energy audit through? You're probably aware of that, I'm sure.
I am aware of that. And that, that's a good example of what happens with energy audits. That was done by a, a great company, Nex- Nexantly did it. Um, and they did several buildings?
I think six.
Six buildings? And they come back with a detailed audit for each building, and that was two or three years ago.
Two thousand twelve is what Denny handed me.
Nothing's been done, for the most part.
Which is possible if we didn't go beyond step one with you as well.
Our step one is basically what you've done with them, but we come in with a lot more detailed because...
That's what I was wondering, what different, what you would add that we didn't have before, I guess.
We look at all the major equipment, like the chillers, the boilers, and that type of stuff that... It's not necessarily energy conservation, but it's something that's the heart of the building. And if that doesn't work, your boilers aren't going to work. So, we go a lot more in-depth to the higher deck things.
We have Murray Hill out there. We have budget money spent out there for several different items. Can you come back to the board and tell if the tools are putting money into that building?
Sure, we do that all the time.
We have the Eagles Club that's empty. Can you tell us is the worst save now, or what can we do to make the building more efficient, things like that? Is that all part of this?
That's all part of it, exactly. And thanks for bringing that up. We do that a lot in the public school districts across the state. And there's a lot of, uh, a lot of them out there the state would still like to see combined and join together. And it's a matter of which buildings are best. So, we do that a lot, all the time with school districts coming to evaluate them. Yeah, it's a good building that's been here since nineteen oh-three, going to stand probably for another hundred years, but it's so shot on the inside that we're, we're going to spend more money trying to renovate it than just build a new building. Or is the space available or the parts of the district, can we just simply make some moves? So, we, we do that type of view, if you'll please.
Hi, my concern is, um, we only react. When it breaks, we fix it. Does, are you, are you looking at laying this out over a period of time, what needs to be done now, next year, next year, next year, next year, next year?
Yeah, we help you prioritize that. The things that are critical, like a step issue, would certainly be critical. You've got to get that done now. Uh, let's see if it's a boiler that's on its last light. We'll help you detail, uh, what the life expectancy is of the equipment that's there. Sometimes it makes more sense to phase things out over a period of years, particularly in buildings where you occupy. Some things need to be done now. And we help you prioritize those. We also help you prioritize them by dollars and cents and payback, because some things, like old lighting systems, will last forever. But doesn't, it might make more sense to put newer, high-efficient, better lighting in now, even though we could drag them off for another thirty years, so.
Well, we, our heating and cooling in the three major buildings, uh, my best guess is they're twenty-five to thirty-five years old, if not more. And the life expectancy is...
Right there.
Pushing the envelope, so we can't wait until it breaks...
Exactly.
...on all that stuff at one time. Um, there's got to be, there's got to be some looking at what's working and what can hang on and what...
Exactly. Yep, and that's a big part of what we do is help you work through that. And we, we'll make recommendations. It's still your decision. All we can do is make recommendations. And that's where having the mechanical engineers on our staff now and the people that service this type of product every day is so helpful to us to come in. And we're, again, we're not here to replace your local contractors. That's not our interest whatsoever. But we can bring that expertise to the table to help analyze the buildings with no interest in it from a servicing standpoint for the long run. So, let's do what's right for the building.
Do you have this fancy word lead on here?
Yeah.
Is that just on there or are you lead?
No, we have twelve lead certi- actually fourteen lead certified. Um, some of them are professional engineers and some of them are, are project managers. So, we are lead certified.
I know that.
In both new buildings and existing.
That's an expensive process, isn't it, to go through to be lead certified or a lot of stuff?
It is. It can be expensive, particularly if you're going for platinum. It's gotten better because a lot of the equipment providers are manufacturing equipment to those standards now. So, we would do that anyhow, but if, if you're looking for lead certification, we can help you get there. But there's always a cost.
One more question. If we ever hit the point where you come back with projects, will they be individual projects, not phases? There's a reason I'm saying this, because we ran this in LEC, where they put it as phases. It's like one project here, one project there. It solves a major problem.
The critical part of that is how they interface. If one project has to interface with the other, for whatever reason, you may have to do it. If they're two separate things, lighting and building automation, two separate things, you can do whatever you want, basically. So, the better usually, but we can still...
Equipment remodeling, things like that, we're limited to one point two million before we have to go to a whole project. If it's phases, that's where we ran the problem with our J. Just a thought to keep kind of mind here. Just a thought to keep kind of mind here.
And, and quite often, we do get involved with public votes and things, just because of the dollar size, it has to go that way. You know, it's just part of, part of the process. We certainly want to make sure that those things are done properly. You've got to be really careful not to break a project down too purposely.
Yes.
Very cautious.
Yep, you have a very good...
Anyone else?
Well, free is a good word.
Well, it, and again, it's...
Nothing's free, Larry, you do know that.
Well, if we don't go past one, it's free.
The, the documentation for that phase one, or for that first step, is really, it's a letter of intent that we'd want you to take and look at and read it. There's nothing cast in stone, we can write anything in that you want, but basically it just gives us authority to come into your buildings and what we're going to provide back to you and what we expect you to do with that, which is basically take a look at it as a committee, sit down, take a look at it. After that, then we decide what to do in the long run. Our state contract does cover the, the next phase two, which is the detailed audit. It runs, it's, it's a customized project, once we know what you want to do, but it's in the fifteen to twenty-five cents of, of square foot range, but not always all the square footage is included. So it's something that we work on as we move forward.
So just so I'm, I'm clear, and step two, and Supervisor Clausen mentioned correctly, step one is free, step two, the, the detailed facility audit, when we go from the thirty-thousand foot view on what your equipment is and what some of the life may be out there, this is much more detailed, and that's where an incurred cost would be on, here could be four or five different chiller manufacturers and the, the efficiency rebates and everything else. When we zoom down, that's when a per square footage cost would incur.
Yes, yes.
And then, step three, if we went to the final design and pricing, there's, there's a fee schedule.
No more for us at that point. The fee then becomes your design team. We're covered under the detailed audit still at that point.
Okay.
So then, we need to engage with your, with your design team. And then, with implementation, we work as all construction managers, do we get a percentage of the project?
Okay.
And that's again negotiated by the state already. We can usually beat the state contract if the, the project's big enough.
Okay.
And it depends on the phasing, how many years we're going to have somebody here, you know, a lot of variables to that.
You're not involved in the total fee?
I'm sorry?
On the last page, we have the square foot price, but then we have a project size, and then there's a total fee there.
Right.
Is that a maximum, or what is that?
That is a maximum, yeah.
That includes the square footage?
There's two different things. The square footage is just for the detailed audit, and that's, that's not making any improvements, that's engaging our engineers in the, the expertise that we need. When we're done with that, you pay us for the detailed audit. We either go away or we keep working to implement the project. The cost per, the cost per square footage is, is for the construction management part of the process. That's really why we're here, that's our long-term mission, is to help you get this done. And I can tell you, ours have gone down to a fraction of that depending on the project size. We just, that's what the state asks for, that's how we've negotiated with the state. The other thing about our fee is all-inclusive, so our, our fees, the percentage you see there includes every wheel that turns, every car that goes, every manpower hour, where a lot of times that could be additional services, additional costs. It's all-inclusive, so on the day of bids, you can go to the bank, you know what you bought on dollars. Any other questions? Thank you so much for allowing me to come in, appreciate it. Feel free to give me a call at any time. The last page has my name, direct phone number's on it, feel free at any time to give me a call. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can ask a question of you and/or the board as a whole, I, I would like to put on for next week's agenda, and this is what I had initially stated, to take action just on the first step, which my understanding is a letter of intent, simply to authorize the step one for the, the service of analyzing what our buildings have and coming back to the board.
Sounds like a plan.
Do you have that letter of intent?
I don't have it, I can certainly handle it.
Yes.